So. 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 Probably. Be.
Maybe.
Can't. Oh. So. Of. Oh. Can't.
Well, I'm. It was the. Oh, oh, me. So, not one to to be a team. So that's for me. So. I'm happy. Yeah. Um. So. I is. True. It's the one. Right there.
The budget, the budget that looks like this is the one that I did.
What?
Twenty twenty four. The one that looks like this is the last version of May Brown. And then, of course, the other one that's dated twenty three to twenty four is the last budget.
Oh, good one. Oh. Oh. Yeah. Anyone pays money. Hmm, that's right. Who's where she's from? Or me. Rich. I love it. I'm sorry. How? Okay. Oh.
Yes.
Corey. What? What?
I I think I I didn't hear you. Is this. Uh. The business permits, uh, the mayor has eleven hundred and. The last time there was a work session, council talked about. Potentially increasing activity in town as well as the business. Uh. License. Increasing, so that's where it went from eleven hundred to eighteen hundred, I believe. Over.
It's the first. But. Oh. So. That's it.
See. Here. I said. Oh. Amen. Oh, it's what's. The paper. Like the eggs on. Oh, we. Did that? So. I don't know.
That's it.
Thank. So. Oh. Oh. Yeah. What? Say. See.
There was an email that was sent out. There was an email that was sent out. They had twenty five questions. Did you guys get it? That's twenty five question to to. What you're talking about, um, as far as having an understanding where some of the figures have come from.
That's simple. So.
Uh, July second. I'll go print it out if it's okay.
Okay. I'm.
I will.
So. Here. Here. So. This is. Our. Oh. I'm. Sure. Let's see.
Wow. Oh.
See.
Should.
Yeah.
On. True. I was thinking. So. You add. What they think.
No, that's that's not ready. That's that's not. All we need. Maybe. So.
Okay.
I know.
She figured.
That's that is. Very valid. So here's the interest. Who from? This. This is twenty two. Okay. Okay, since. This is twenty. This is. This is large. And so only only two. Possibly. So. Others. Uh. For. Possible. Change. So if you look at. There are improvements of interest. First of all, I just give you an actual. So if you go down, go to. Select. To. So if you look at some of the. But it is. For.
It's. It's. But. It was. Let's. That's. From.
This.
Anyway, this is.
Well, she was your last. See. It's. She. I don't.
What's? Ah.
So you. All I need. It's. You. Perfect. It's possible. Absolutely. Ask.
Sure. It's. I don't. And.
Doesn't.
Let's let's give. Okay. I asked.
When? From.
I mean. Oh.
Yes.
You know. Uh. I'm gonna be. I.
The franchise means yes, that was that was. Is that what you said? Yeah.
So. We for. And then.
The fringe benefits did not come from myself.
Okay.
That was that those figures can copied over from. Your version of the budget.
Absolutely.
That's where I got the diamond figures from.
Sorry, got two budgets in front of us for previous years.
I didn't copy the previous years. I just.
I thought.
What you.
I thought.
Okay, but I still got it from you.
You did.
Said we're getting released now.
Yep. It. It's so.
If.
But it. Up to. All we just. There's no way we can. Anything. We can't possibly say. To. That's that's not our negotiation. So. Absolutely. So. Sit down, wait. Sit. Sit.
But maybe just me. Um. If it's generally sit. So let's see. Ask them, so. If we don't pay the. Four four thousand. Player. And their response was. Yeah, it's small. You know, you know, it's it's it's. Oh. It's.
Kind of so. I. Yep. Sure. So. Sorry. Yeah. Well. They won't stand. Any. Sign. So. I think. But. What's happening? So. Do. But I. Sit down. But. Go.
As executive section.
Other. Yeah. It's. Sorry. That's. One.
So. Um. I'm trying. Oh. So. You. To. Um. So that's. Five percent. Um, the. Right. So. Your. At all. From. Yeah. So. It. I mean. He. Yeah. I know. For this. Um. I. I would. Good. So. Good.
You're right. Two spoke up. Sure. So. Oh.
I. Oh. One. Pretty. That. Thanks.
Awesome.
Okay. Also. So. Um. You're supposed. I don't know. Still. Yes. You're discussing. But in. Sure. But. Well. Um. If you. Between your budget session. You don't have. I. I search. Self. Sales. And you can present. You picture. Five thousand. Forty thousand. Whatever it is. Budget. You don't even have. The side line. It's part of something. So there's services. Part of it. So you definitely make certain some of the funding. Uh. In your budget for session and business. But. I mean, that's sufficient. It's all. Don't be. Sure. If nobody funded. Or whatever. For you guys. Public charity. And they go offering. So. What I what I would suggest. So there's a name. And a mom. And then that's sure. Sure, this is. Or with. Or whatever that. You don't have to work with. In your work session. Budget work session. Not. Follow anybody. This. You are. Or it. That's it. That's the only process. It's about. Obviously. It's one. It's not. All. Things. If. I. I did that. Session. Or that's. So. My. That's. But. Sure. Um. People.
Right now. Oh.
Hey.
We could, but we can. Change now. We talked about that last thing. It's. All right now. All. It's. 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 Right.
That was to be continued because there were some pricing that was for the website and data keeping that you come back with.
How do we know?
Cause you said it.
It's not.
You see, I'm telling you that's what. That's what you said.
Yeah, it's not.
Okay, well. I remember. I remember.
Far and wide. Says not.
A work session. In a.
I should admit.
A true comment.
These other things looking at us. We don't know any of the prices for. It's like. It probably is. For what we assist. I can hardly know. But. And. For a bunch of it.
Yeah. So.
Yeah. So. She did. But. But. Check. Hours. Time.
When you reference. There's additional information that was also needed for this. It is not known exactly how much it costs for the training. For each, including magistrate.
So. Still. On. Top. Or. Do you have? Um. I know.
It's also in the ordinances to. A a a brief. So that.
Should be. I try. Yeah. Here.
You. I think. That's. Oh. So. And. Great.
So. First. She's here. In. I see. It's not. So. See. So. 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 Okay. Oh. So right. Baby. Uh. Do. I've. Up. Really. Fair enough.
Ah. Yes, we think that's. True.
Sorry. But. That's. Let's get it. Uh. Something like. Was like. This. Now. Sure. That is not. So even. Uh. That's. Get it. It's the word. On. On. Two. Of I want. She can play for. Probably probably. What's that? It is. Um. So. Is there any? I want to. Say no. It's. It's all. I hope you know. Of it. Uh. That. Oh, I. Very happy. That's why. How was it? Um, no, I. Sure. That's good. So what do you need? Uh.
You're moving out. Being one still. What they say, it's it's on. So probably. Not that one, that's. It's on the administration page. Point of reference. There was an email that was sent by Santee Lynch's already. And that estimation is on. The version of the budget that I did.
Okay. So. So. I would think. That's. All. See. See. Uh. See. And. Right. I understand. As. Um.
Ah. Um. And. Um. Make sure.
No. Changes. Yeah.
I'm going to share on the board. Nothing. Like.
So what we got to do that. Should say. At sixteen thousand. What is that? So. To. Um. I. Now I think I'm looking. But. Take sixty thousand. But.
I have a question on the topic that you just asked. It's on the topic that you discussed. What? Item are you discussing?
The demolition. How did you do this project? It's the project.
It it. Doesn't necessarily have to take from anything. You set that in there as a priority. That is not, um. Something that the town can go without, can.
Well.
Sure.
So.
Hey.
I'm demoing. Obviously, we've got. But just stuff that's going to be sixteen thousand. It's kind of something.
It's like. If everyone wants to know. And even though we. So was.
Let's say a court order demolition. Was because the town. Or they're all demolished.
That was great.
That was a great. So the money is there for. We got the magic.
Now the money is already going to pay. So how.
Uh, it's pretty right. So that means something they even look at. Listen. They can't. They don't know six thousand.
Right. They're not. The town is responsible.
Emergency. Sort of some merging.
Everyone's there. Also say long.
But. Something like this. Where I don't. Right. You know. Just. So we're all.
Uh. Point of information. The. Individuals working on the same two inches demolition project. I sent an email out about that. Uh, because there were some systems that. Were not, um. Particularly happy about who was contacting. Regarding paperwork.
I was really saying not. Excuse me, I just need to say that again.
The demolition project. The people who were contacting individuals regarding the houses. Okay, as it was. Well, okay.
What are the, okay, so I'm not understanding.
Due to who was contacting them over their signature form. You cut me off every single time. I'm just trying to answer your question, if you will allow me to. People are not particularly comfortable with suspended councilman Wilson. But. I was suspended councilman Wilson talking about paperwork needing signatures. So the balance actually doesn't, it it could not really be existing. It shouldn't be there. But council has not worked together as a whole.
What were you doing? I asked for the public. He knew some of. Their papers. And one so. Okay, stop. Stop. I don't think you know what's going on in this whole thing. Or does she? Hmm, because none of you want to do it. Absolutely. I will give you the names and feel like the contact with break. Are you sure saying what have we got? Nothing. Oh, you got me. Who can go now?
Another clerk trip was working.
The sheriff showed. One of them. You were given an opportunity to come back with business. Okay, so. You feel fulfilled in silence. Listen to me. This was the former administration. This is the former administration and. And council. They there this and fits inside. Nothing got done. So what the main things are. We're doing the best we can. People have reached out.
People. You just, you just said news, but now you're saying people. This is the, this is what.
For a second. I did as much as I could to tell the general public that I can find this. One of them. Bought two other properties on a tax lien sale, which is against the law. For that individual to let it go to tax lien sale. But was anybody in the administration watching? That papers didn't sign. Had a win that signed, no, none of it had done. So now we have no contact with that. Would you? On two properties, signed a lease agreement, said, put a lien on my property now. On two properties. Not a chance in this world you can do that. Just purchase them and make money. You're not going to let somebody put a lien on it for five years so you can make no money. Nobody's going to sign it. They're right on.
So how come council? Was not notified so that council could assist to participate in that.
How you're going to assist?
You sat here, they they are from Maysville. They know most of the people, if not everyone, are related to on the list.
Okay, so what?
But there's no transparency with what you're dealing with because you don't talk to county.
I'm sorry, but three times. Three times with council. I have gone to the general public, said, some help.
So I have a question. Since since you mentioned that. You just said. Three times with council, you went to the general public. That is not going to counsel. So how is it? That going to the public? When. Certain topics are supposed to be talked to the council first. How is that going to solve the problem, whether it be the CDBG or USDA? Because it's the same scenario for for different topics.
I don't even know what you're talking about.
Right, so.
You are the public. We are all the public. What? So so we have a difference of. On that. We are all the public. So we are. Yeah. Okay, so we have one. Thank you. It is. Basically. Thank you.
Six thirty?
Good.
Sounds good.
Did you stop?
Okay.
I can thank those that attended the court session for the budget. We love all this meeting in order.
Press that on that button.
I'm having a problem pressing. So. To cheer.
Sir, sir.
And what are you doing?
And you.
Can you hear me in my survey?
Yes, you are. Please go back into. The ground, please.
Why you are? We are representatives and I'm there.
And man, you are out. You do not direct this. Okay, I will. I will. Thank you. I I. Sir, you're excuse me. You have disrupted this. You can go sit down, please. Now.
He has made a motion that we, our lawyer, please stay in the one who appeals with. Counsel and. I said, no, you don't. You are here, guys. I'll speak up.
You will. Thank you. There's been seconded by. Councilman Benjamin, uh, the attorney stay up here. Um. Better. Of course. All in favor?
Uh huh.
Hey. You may say, uh, was there another motion that you have?
Do and say.
In this section, right?
Either here or.
I would second the executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
There will be an executive session after this meeting.
Uh. Got a question. You said there will be a meeting after you.
An executive session after we adjourn from the regular.
Okay, but you said at the end of the agenda.
No, not at the end of the agenda. At the end of this meeting.
You answered Mayor Proton Benjamin. You told her, you 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 stated that.
I am so sorry, but you are causing disruption. You are causing the disruption. We we just seconded, I said, at end of this meeting. Everybody voted, said, aye. We're at the end of this meeting. We are not going to break from this meeting. We can do it after. So that we're not gonna disrupt the public. That's what we're doing and that's what is passed, right?
Exactly. Sorry. I got the motion after the meeting I needed with being having. While.
That's what he said when he called the motion. At the end, what he said when he called the motion. But then afterwards, he said at the end of the meeting instead of at the end of the agenda.
So let's clarify. Say, yeah.
We expect the section, so it's after the.
Now, if you turn from.
I said, I was there after the first. Next table.
So I have a problem. I would say.
She did. She had words. Aaron, council, not following.
Yeah, disruption.
You're out of water.
Okay. No, you you are out of water. No. Well, listen.
Time read. Follow the law when I.
No, I can just order it. You write a name?
Yeah.
Okay.
But.
What you guys all need to know, first of all. First of all, you need to realize that none of you call anybody out of order. That is, that is exactly correct. Go back and read the law. And if you want to go to the attorney and talk about it, sir, could you tell them who is the one that directs this meeting?
Council.
Call them.
This is why you want to get out of.
That's not. So.
Right.
So.
But we might get kicked out.
What are you talking? These are all of your.
Okay, yeah, I love that. Yeah.
Anything about the.
Stop. Right, right.
So calling an executive session. That's a must make a motion at both and probably regular or special party. I agree. So is there a time? Eric Castle cannot call an executive session. Second such simply by issue of privacy session must be set by motion that popular probably notice. One hundred. What is the reason that we are having?
Yeah.
There is no legal matter. There is nothing that has been, nobody's charged. So what is the?
That's fine. That's what.
There's not. There's nothing.
What?
What are we talking? Who are we talking?
I understand that there was folks in place. But then there's that. And.
I'm talking about.
So there was a motion made proper second, second session to the agenda. I think. A first part, and you're now asking whether it's second session. And executive session. A legal matter, and I believe somebody said something, pardon some. And. Whether you think that it's a not whether there's an investigation by a sheriff, but it's irrelevant for this government. This government body, they would say, also to discuss it. That's that's.
Why is the legal?
Yeah, what it is.
Stop. Why is the legal issue?
The legal issue, I'm glad. The legal issue is supposedly there was some criminal activity that took place around now.
So you're accusing some.
Listen, we're going to the second exception, and that's what we discuss. I'm not accusing anybody, but there is an issue about whether there was some criminality. And whether maybe there was.
You go ahead and there's no reason. There's no. Stop. And the rest of you stop also. There is nothing that has been done.
But you can't stop this government body from that second section session. You know, you know.
I can't.
Do you know what the issue is?
Absolutely.
You do? Then you're the one the legal issue.
There's no legal issue.
That's your assessment, but the government body makes the decision, and you're only one.
Our government body doesn't do anything with legal issues. There's no criminal, nothing criminal that has been done by anybody.
They're not prosecuting on Mr. Mayor. They're saying they got a legal issue.
What is the legal issue?
The legal issue, there's some, a believed criminal activity that may have occurred here in town.
But there's no.
But you go, you're talking about prosecution. We're not talking about prosecution. This government body is talking about a legal event that occurred in town. Excuse me, an illegal event that occurred in town. And that that's illegal event occurred as a result of one of their ousted council members. And it is an illegal intent. They have a right to discuss in an executive session to make a determination if the town government wish to address that issue. You can't stop them when they made the motion. I I don't wanna appear like I'm arguing with you. I just wanna stay on the record. What this genre asks me, what is the issue? And I'm saying that's for executive session. They made a motion for the second session at the end of the uh agenda issue first with your butt. And the motion they made, if there is none, you can't stop it now because the motion was made in town.
Sure, I can stop it if there is a legal reason to go in executive session.
Not if they vote on this.
Yes, there is. You've got to have five reasons to go in there. There is nothing legal going on right now. There's no prostitution. There's nobody been charged. There is nothing. So there's no legal that has been established.
But maybe it's savage.
No, they.
Not established. I mean, I don't wanna compare it to art there with you. I'm just telling you that the government body has decided that they wanted to.
They can't if it doesn't. No, not if it doesn't.
Well, I don't want to debate you on it. I'm just telling you what's wrong. It may decide not to do it. I'm happy with it.
I'm showing you. I'm showing the law, and there's five reasons to have an executive session, and there is no reason that we have to have an executive session.
And you've agreed that they made a motion second.
It doesn't matter if it is against.
The world agrees that they made a motion second and voted.
Sure, okay.
So then it's on to their.
Against the law.
Well, then that would be yours and the public who wish to have it addressed. But what I'm talking about is following the law. I'm not talking about my opinion or your opinion.
Oh, wait a minute. Following the law. So you tell me why we're going into executive.
I mean, I.
No, no. Why are we going into executive session?
And that's me.
Please.
Okay, we're going into a second session to discuss legal issues.
What? Legal issue?
The legal issue involves an event that occurred in or about town, an event that may or may not have occurred.
Then there's nothing to discover. There's. First of all, this is an introductory criminal case like you said, it's very simple.
Okay.
But sir, I'm asking.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anything been charged? Has anybody been charged?
Yes, I'm trying to.
Yes.
Okay. It is my understanding that law enforcement has been uh is involved. I don't know if anybody has been, what was your question, arrested? Or charged. I don't know if anybody's been charged or not. And nobody may ever be charged. There's that regulation. Please, let me think. Nobody may never be charged about. But this governmental body, which is a governmental entity, correct? Has a right to decide if they wanna discuss that issue.
Or by purpose.
That's not true, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to debate you on it.
Right here.
You're overruling me.
Scott, does it say it right here in the governing body, the South Carolina law? Yes or no?
Does it say what?
Does it say must be. Be for a legal issue? Yes or no?
Yes.
What's the legal issue? No, he hasn't told me anything.
The legal issue is. Is. That there is a allegation. If you like that word better.
That's not a legal issue? Nobody has been charged for any.
There is an allegation that somebody broke the law. Okay.
Did they? Did they break the law?
It's irrelevant.
No, it's not a problem.
But you're telling, you're not asking. It's irrelevant whether that person broke the law. This government body decided that they want to discuss it.
The room is unlocked.
What room is unlocked? I I'm telling you what the law is. If you say it's not, there's not. All right, but then I'm telling you this government body hold it on the executive session.
We will not meet for this illegal. Stop. This illegal meeting. You may, if you choose and you choose to be for it. That is your choice. But you have been counseled. By somebody that is going to. Port it to the bar also based on the law. So you have a choice. So. Are you choosing to be? So. Agenda. Is there a motion?
I made a motion for. Uh, the first.
All in favor? Financial reports. I thought we had already read financial report for us.
No, that's when the mayor said that he would do it and he didn't, and I noticed that it wasn't done, so it is prepared.
All right, let's go. March twenty fourth. You start with that, please, sir.
So if you, being that the budget is gonna be dealt with, want me to go through all of them?
That would, March twenty fourth, please turn to them so that we can talk about March twenty. You guys like one of those? Yes, ma'am.
I asked a question.
What was the question?
In the past, council has been split on how they wanted the, the, the uh, financial statements read, so.
This one we're gonna read. We'll have some fun.
For March twenty twenty four, the town of Maysville. General funds account beginning balance two hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred ninety-two dollars and sixty-three cent. Ending balance two hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred seventy-one dollars. I'm sorry, nine hundred dollars and seventy-one cents. So that's ending balance, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars and seventy-one cents. Okay, going through the withdrawals slash debits, I wanted to bring attention to the town of May.
Please stop. First of all, the deposit. So you know all the income that's coming in. So you know.
Wait, wait a minute, i- if you don't mind, I was in the middle of my financial report.
So that everybody can hear the financials. Do you know all the incomes and outgoings of the town of Mason?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so you could print off exactly what comes in from state treasurer, you could. All of our. Uh, franchise fees and you could put a list of all of those incomes that we have. Yes or no?
That's one way.
Why didn't we have?
That's one way. The other way is the way you did it, if I go in by the bank account.
That's the same way you would. Those are the.
So what are you questioning me for right now?
Because you have never given the councils that they can see.
I have, I have notified the council and for the work session, you did see, you stopped. And you didn't wanna review the budget that I prepared. You're not interested.
You don't care about it. That's not the clerk's responsibility.
So how do you think you got this far? You're supposed to work with the clerk treasurer. I'm trying to work with you vicariously and you're still not wanting to even anticipate. Or even entertain talking about the town bill.
Ma'am, you're the treasurer. What you would do as a treasurer is you would list out all the incomings and where they came from. And all the outgoings and where they came from. So that we could all look at them and discuss. That never happened. It has never happened. It's never.
There's a lot.
Previously.
There's a lot of things that have not happened. Because of, because of the relationship that is between you and myself. That's a big problem with creating this budget. The ordinance, the ordinances state. That the council can prepare the budget, the mayor can prepare the budget, and the treasurer can help prepare the budget. Yes, so.
And it's not the council that prepares the budget, but if the laws, the mayor prepares the budget and then gives it to the council.
It also states, it also states that the council and the treasurer can same.
No, it doesn't.
It does.
You may find it, you may submit it to the council soon.
See, you have no interest in even hearing it.
All right. Continue to go on.
The withdrawals slash debits for January, uh, January twenty-third, there is an entry for the refund. For the town of Maysville CDC. I wanted to bring that to your attention because previously Mayor Brown stated that. Uh, it was not authorized that they get a refund and that is not the case. It was authorized. He did send me an email telling me to send them a reimbursement check for the portion of the insurance premium. That was returned when he canceled the policy. And there is an outstanding balance of sixty dollars and some change that that needs to be repaid as well. And he refused to pay that as well. So, uh, going through the rest of the withdrawal slash debits, um. I don't see anything else. Uh, we've got the demolition payments accounted for in both accounts from two-nine-zero-one. Being transferred.
We're down to three-twenty-one, six payroll, Collins, set off with. Five point seven. Their pay is three seventy-two ninety-six.
Okay, again, I will. Explain what the setup that is. That is a payment that is received once a month and then reimbursements for gasoline.
Gasoline or who?
My travels, taking care of town business.
What paying your gas, go to and from home?
I love how. Accusations are made with your questions. That is, I said, taking care of town business. That's, I, I'm, I'm wanting you to elaborate because you actually approved my mileage. So now, what are you saying?
I approved your mileage how many times?
Several.
No, once.
I have the emails to pull it up, so it's okay. What are you trying to say right now?
I'm saying, yes.
But yes, the town has been reimbursing me for the town business that I take care of in my new vehicle, and that is allowed.
What town business do you have?
Council. At this point, I'm disturbed. I'm not gonna sit here and continue to be ridiculous. There are four more, three, four months of financial reports to go through. May I please continue?
Yes.
Moving along to the victim's assistance report for March twenty twenty-four, there was just an interest credit of ten cent. Leaving the ending balance of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and seventy-one cent. March twenty twenty-four CDBG, CDBG grant. There were three entries for the demolition. They are all listed there and the ending balance being zero.
You can go back up to three-twenty-two, right? Also, they're set off with six hundred.
I'll be happy to take a, a look at the. The authorization for the reimbursement that you, that you authorized and send it to you. I just figured I'd wait for you to get something else out because you keep interrupting. For the ARPA twenty twenty-four. Uh, March twenty twenty-four, there was only an interest credit for three hundred thirty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cent, leaving an ending balance of. One hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty-four cent. And the March twenty twenty-four report for USDA, the interest credit of sixty-nine cent. It left an ending balance of ninety-one thousand and seventy. That is it for March. Moving along to April. April twenty twenty-four, the general funds account had a beginning balance of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars and seventy-one cent. And ending balance of two hundred and forty-four thousand, twenty dollars and six cent. The deposit is listed and. The transfer for the CDBG is listed as well. And that is it. For the CDBG grant, April twenty twenty-four. There are four entries listed. Ending balance in zero. CDBG grant for April twenty twenty-four. I'm sorry, it was. The USDA. For April twenty twenty-four had a interest credit of sixty-eight cent, leaving the ending balance of ninety-one thousand, one dollar and thirty-eight cent. ARPA account for twenty, uh, April twenty twenty-four had an interest credit of three hundred twenty-seven dollars and three cent. Leaving an ending balance of one hundred ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-seven cent. And I already read it, right? Oh, victims assistance, uh, beginning, uh, interest credit of nine cent, leaving the ending balance of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and eighty cent. Did I read? Yes. Correct.
All, all of those.
For the month of May, the general funds account. Beginning balance two hundred and forty-four thousand, twenty dollars and six cent. Ending balance, two hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars and four cent. What I'll say about this one is on May fifteenth, uh, I have no idea what that deposit was for. Uh, Mayor Brown has not submitted that yet. And if you noticed, Piva has, uh. Six payments, that was the, uh, getting caught up from being in arrears. And if you know, uh, May twentieth. Take a look at the quick books, that payment is supposed to be three hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-one cent. And that is it. Okay, on to June. General funds account, May, uh, June twenty twenty-four. Beginning balance two hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars and four cent. Leaving an ending balance with two hundred and ninety-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-one cent. Know what? Of the budget. I gave, uh, everybody had a copy. Of what? Uh, yeah, I put the budgets on, on the desk, I mean, on the table. I can't print. I'm having a problem printing. What I can do is give you. The general, general funds for each month. Paid by telephone. It was done by check by telephone. That's how you do it, by telephone. It does not have a physical check number.
Six eleven.
As stated in the last meeting, it was I. I had used the gas card one time. Put gas in the truck.
So you talked about.
Oh, no, you, you, you made it apparently clear in the last meeting and council all agreed that, yes, the gas card would be used.
I'm sorry, look at all the council.
It's, I mean. I, we can agree to disagree. I don't agree with what you're saying. It was mentioned months before it was even received. I was asked, it's in the email and. We did, that's what he's just saying. He didn't.
Are we done with all of that?
Yes, that is it.
Is there a motion to approve?
On March eighth and.
The second by council. This point. To prove the first. Twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five budget. With some. Small cheese. Because of. If demolition. Presently, oh. San Tule sixteen thousand. So we put that in the budget. Um, reduce the town of Maysville. Twenty-three thousand, five dollars and forty cents and. Eighteen and a version. It's five dollars. We also took. Of five thousand. So I'm present that demolition, just, just to give you an update. The reason. We are at sixteen thousand, five hundred seventeen after ten thousand dollars. San Tule did not know that he as a town had to file. So we get to now go and file a lien and it should be that sixty thousand. But there are still three in those that have not signed. I doubt we'll get. Two of them. So we will probably still owe sort of now, I don't know. So the, the max we will owe right now is sixty thousand. So motion is to approve it as we have a now person.
So big lots, like, glad you're free. Okay, so at your, on the previous meeting, pay the motion, or you or council, pay the motion for the first resolution, because you have not passed, but even with this budget tonight, and I'm assuming that will be passed, even with this budget tonight, it will not be final reading. And since it will not do the final reading, that means it's gonna go in live. Maybe we'll do a final rea- maybe we'll do a final reading before they end the slide, but until we do a final reading, even in this month, we have to approve a continuous resolution, we have to pass a continuous resolution until we actually approve this agenda. So before you guys, um, make a motion and second the motion to approve this budget, you need to make a motion for continuous resolution, so that whenever you get to your next reading, do a final review of the budget, you'll still be operating equal under state law. So all I'm suggesting is that before you do a bu- budget motion, you all do a continuous resolution uh, to operate on the budget that you're operating on, until you pass your final passage of your budget, understand what I'm saying?
Sure I do. But I don't think it makes much difference right now because budget was not followed last. We're over budget in so many different categories that doesn't make
I'm just.
Well, I, I know, I did. But the law has not been followed up. So I will change that, so strike the motion, make a motion for a continuous resolution till we can get second. Done? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Now I'll make a motion to approve as I've got first reading of this budget. Um, there's second. All in favor? Budget is presently passed in its first reading. I were discussing with council right now, we'd like to, because it has been advertised paper. Obviously, there's going to be changes from first reading to second reading, a lot of times. There's already been advertised, posted for the fifteen days. In six days from now, with the council, they're, they're, or short this, this second. So six days, seven days. When? What is the?
No, you said. Oh.
So what is the next, what's the next? Twenty seven. So are you all right, twenty seven? Whenever you guys are live, doesn't matter. Okay. So let's really evening and six thirty. And, uh, better again, alright. Um, somebody have a motion? Just, exactly.
I made a motion.
All in favor? You opposed, I will need a second. There is nothing further, I don't have any affairs, wanted to or no disinterest, so if probably feels like it comes on stage. After we get back down. Yes, so we'll go forth with it.
Yeah, but it's more.
Cause why we can't have a run, cause she wants to, but he had to be paid himself. Like yesterday, the mail was on top, had to go back home. You talked something, when he woke me up. He teased me for our work. Later, man. So they, the man called me, and when he checked, I don't know, he checked, so he's yeah, because I said, yeah, I go now, he had, what's the name, I got up, got up, came up in the game with Ryan, oh, daddy. Uh, I stopped it before I knew where to get people from his house, I stopped it. Hey, I was when you move me to police. She up on the hour, say, okay, I go we took the man's house, got, got the, um, turned y'all, all y'all the city, say, you guys, come nowhere over here, cause I thought everything that's going on, they won't be video so bad. But I can't watch it right now, cause investigation that it was on, I can say that, it was a public dollars. It was not public dollars to our people even, until I, I got the letter back from the uh, a month ago, stating that uh, what we was waiting on the whole time, you know, to me, the investigation is over. The investigation is over, we go to the court, I told him, I really want to go to the we go in court, jury, yeah, jury, everything that's going on. They got it all, three guys. Okay, good. I got three, and back, and backed over here to take the car for back my when I came in the parking lot, y'all turn, husband, son. He was right there. He saw me pull up back, I don't look back in the chair. Can't run it over there. Can't run it over there. I sent him a truck, I'm in. Had to think about it, baby, I started thinking about everybody. I started thinking about everybody, you know?
There's a gas card. Suspended councilman doesn't need to get gas for the town. You don't need to either, there's a gas card.
She said, you're a mayor, you don't get a car. I
No more, go everybody, so tell.
Don't say.
If your stores actually stay open, they lock, and council won't be able to get back in.
Uh, that's a spoiler. That's a
Yeah, picture has all of this one, yeah. It's is her. Oh, yeah. She's so so we get all the and to expose all the
Uh. Um, early justice and six I mean, it's not even changing. So very gentle. So you know, it's there's a anyway. Your that is that you're I'm stuck. It I'm kidding. I'm like, I'm sorry, I'm so much, I'm I actually regarding we're in the same I hello. Oh, you're playing. So you know, I so this is they are we don't it's like, I don't know, this, I have to you got I'll okay, so okay. I mean, why? So yeah. So she every I so I even was so I told people that I don't I'm sorry, I don't know the answer, so she had so I don't
We'll bring this meeting to order, um, without any motion to add on the things in uh, executive session, but now during this meeting. What's that?
I make a motion that trust is, um, spending, you know, the uh, record series for a young person until the motion, also starts, uh, this, uh, this card, and then we can activate.
Okay, so the motion has been made by Councilwoman Maskeyel, God, they no trust us. I just know what deal with upon Town of Mayville proper, or stop. Or any town of it. So it's okay to be here because this is not the town proper.
And this is when we, you say, we so now we are I'm sorry. I I'm sorry. And a motion is
Good, is there a second? It's been seconded by Councilwoman to To.
Rear programming?
No, trash, uh, friends will. I don't know one event, so this needs to go on break. What are the events you talked about and what property? Why, oh, any events anywhere in Mayville. This is you as council.
Are you asking me?
I am.
Oh, yes, sir. The, the motion was made to. No trespass, Mr. Wilson from town's property and any town sponsored event. That those events would include town council meetings, uh, they would include, uh, the. Legislative, the legislative meeting, it would include any type of, uh, committee. Or anything that is sponsored by the town, even if it's on the street. Town sponsor, so that's what the motion is.
And the second was. My count's one. Hey, all in favor?
I. Can you?
So. I am telling them that, uh, for relax, you're up. Yes.
They see the audience. And I pay Eddie the money. You made.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, stop. Okay, stop. Now this meeting will be adjourned.
Right, so just calm down.
I will give some time to the board.
There's no list of.
I don't care. I am running.
That's on the ordinance. The ordinance. No, not with him.
Stop.
Ain't nobody.
Legislative session started this. Our name, I would ask the council to go ahead and pass a motion saying the future was not over. That, that you would allow the. That's too much.
So I need question.
Like your. And all kind of baseball bookers and.
If you have no. It will serve the public, serve the public at first speed. I made a motion. Give those that would like to speak. We've got two minutes to stay on topic of what we talked about today. Is there a second?
Is there a chance?
Um, she might. Right, and. Five, five people. You're good with five. Is there a second? All in favor? But you keep time for the two minutes. Is there somebody that'd like to? Remember there are five, there are five people. Getting all fingers. So you're crossing. Yes, ma'am. Stay quiet, sorry, Ricky.
I'm just fine. I was just. But everyone, right? And this is. Properly as what this. That was. And this was under your direction and gas, right? And if under your regulations for him to get gas for the painting. Work was worse. What is evil about that? This is our town. Just wanted to say my.
Thank you.
Oh, my name's. And I'm, I'm a former and I am a. But I have a question that I. Um, someone stated on the town go was saying he was a gentleman. That it was you. Practically all. I'm trying to figure out how. Sounds practically all. Um, so then. Straighten that out for me. As the last time I was. Do you bet?
Can I stop you for a second? You don't talk while somebody else is talking. Then she is out of order. We're supposed to read this. This not to you. You are out of order if you're talking when somebody else is talking.
The common citizen. Five, maybe.
So ma'am, did you want to answer?
Yes, I did want to answer that was known. I'm going to try to figure out. That's another. I know. So I'm trying to. I'm understanding so. But I didn't get other money. It takes something that's public and. Practice and purposes, uh, price and will be there at least ever come. No, after we reading. Perfect. And stuff, and I know that's wrong. And I know I. For folks like. And to a change. That's something. That's personally. Put up. It's happening. Who can't even point at his life, but like. That's all, that's thanks law, that's law.
So in two thousand. In April, um. Former administration council voting to take themselves off. Board of directors of. The cabinet may plus seats. Which controls. These bill. So town council, mayor, all of us are off of that board announcing. Yes.
That's a fair remark, very friendly. And my question. Being. An ask of the council is very difficult for us. Is there any way to. The budget. It's some recording, some microphone. Off and. And a recording device for the. What's said so that there is a, a permanent record that is unbiased and does the.
Thank you. And that was suggested by, uh, the court. He gave some great ideas on putting some real statements up to the budget. The recording device would be very awesome. That was on there, but I think those are some of the. So we'll look at that. Alex. Yes, I'll wait in that. Your propaganda speak very bad for us, it is. I, we can't hear. I know you guys are struggling. Air conditioners. Well, right now we're in discussion. Supposedly invited to the. Well, not right now, yeah, yeah, with that. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I. We've only got five. Already. Can you, uh, do you mind, councilor, she answer? Okay. I'm going to turn this meeting for a second.
I'm thinking.